Okay, it's 5:30. We'll call the meeting to order. If you would please stand and join me at a moment of silent prayer followed by the pledge of allegiance.
Amen. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, a nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. Please be seated. Our first item is to approve the minutes of two previous meetings. The first was the meeting held on September 8th. Does anyone have any changes to those minutes? If not, do I have a motion to approve them as submitted?
I'll move.
Okay, a motion by Commissioner Auguster. Is there a second?
Second.
Second by Commissioner Washington. We have a motion and a second. Any discussion? Then we'll vote. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed say no. And that carries unanimously. And the next item of the minutes of the planning commission meeting held on October 13th. Any changes to those minutes? And if not, do I have a motion to accept them as submitted?
I'll move.
A motion by Commissioner Auguster. Is there a second?
Second.
Second by Commissioner Lrendo. We have a motion and a second. Any discussion? Then we'll vote. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed say no. And that carries unanimously. For each agenda item tonight, we will have a comment period. So if you're here for a specific item, we'll have a public hearing in connection with that item. We also, however, at this point, have a general public comment period for any comments that a person wishes to make not related to the agenda. I do have an intent to speak from a Michael Cording, apparently, about Rock Springs Ridge, and that is not on the agenda. So if you would like to come up, if you're here, and give us your name and address for the record, this is the time to do it. And seeing no one, I assume he's not here. Okay. Our first item is a request to find the proposed small-scale future land use amendment consistent with the comprehensive plan and compatible with the character of the surrounding area, and recommend approval of the small-scale future land use amendment from county rural, that's one dwelling unit per 10 acres, to city industrial, max .06 FAR, for the property owned by Joseph L. Sandrone Estate and located north of Okoye-Popka Road and east of State Route 471. And we have a staff presentation.
Good evening, planning commissioners. Phil Martinez, Planner 2 with the City's Planning Division. The applicant is proposing a small-scale future land use amendment from county rural to city industrial for approximately 8.76 acres. The subject property is highlighted in yellow on the attached map and located north of Okoye-Popka Road and east of State Route 451. To the north and south is an agriculture property, and to the west is a bacon property. And to the east are industrial properties. The property is zoned transitional district, and an application for IL light industrial zoning has been submitted and will be presented at the next agenda item. The subject area is approximately 8.76 acres with industrially zoned or industrially oriented properties being in the vicinity. The Development Review Committee recommends approval of the proposed small-scale future land use amendment from county rural to city industrial, and the recommended motion for this evening is to find the proposed future land use amendment consistent with the comprehensive plan and compatible with the character of the surrounding area, and recommend approval of the change of future land use designation from county rural to city industrial, subject to the findings of the staff report. This concludes my presentation, and I'd be happy to address any questions that she may have.
Okay, any questions of staff? Okay, thank you very much. Does the petitioner have a presentation? Seeing none, we'll close the presentations, bring it to the public hearing. Anyone wish to address the commission on this item? And again, seeing none, we'll close the public hearing, bring it back to the commission. What's your pleasure?
Mr. Chairman, I make a motion to find a proposed small-scale future land use amendment consistent with the comprehensive plan and compatible with the character of the surrounding area, and recommend approval of the small-scale future land use amendment from county rural, 1 DU/10 AC to city industrial, max 0.6 FAR, for the property owned by Joseph L. Sandrone Estate and located north of Okoye-Popka Road and east of State Route 451.
And that's subject to the findings of the staff report? Commissioners, that in...
You have to say "subject to the findings of the staff report."
What am I missing here? Subject to the... And subject to the finding of the staff report.
Okay, we have a motion by Commissioner Washington. Is there a second?
Second.
Second by Commissioner Auguster. We have a motion and a second. Is there any discussion? Then we'll vote. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed say no. And that carries unanimously. Our next item for this same property is a request to find a proposed change of zoning consistent with the comprehensive plan and land development code, and to recommend approval of the proposed change of zoning from T transitional district to IL light industrial district for the property owned by Joseph L. Sandrone Estate and located north of Okoye-Popka Road and east of State Route 451. Staff report.
The applicant is proposing a rezoning from T transitional district to IL light industrial district for the same subject property as the previous agenda item. The proposed IL light industrial district is compatible with the previously proposed industrial future land use. The Development Review Committee recommends approval of the rezoning from T transitional district to IL light industrial district, and the recommended motion for this evening is to find the proposed change of zoning consistent with the comprehensive plan and compatible with the character of the surrounding areas, recommending approval of the proposed change of zoning from T transitional district to IL light industrial district for the property owned by Sandrone Joseph L. Estate and located north of Okoye-Popka Road and east of State Route 451. This concludes my presentation, and I'd be happy to address any questions that she may have.
Okay, any questions of staff? Okay, thanks, Phil. Does the petitioner have a presentation? And again, seeing none, we'll close the presentations and open the public hearing. Anyone wish to appear before the commission on this item? And seeing none, we'll close the public hearing, bring it back to the commission. What's your pleasure?
I move that we find the proposed change of zoning consistent with the comprehensive plan and land development code, and recommend approval of the proposed change of zoning from T transitional district to IL light industrial district for the property owned by Joseph L. Sandrone Estate and located north of Okoye-Popka Road and east of State Route 451.
Okay, we have a motion by Commissioner Lrendo. Is there a second?
I second.
Second by Commissioner Washington. We have a motion and a second. Any discussion? And hearing none, we'll vote. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed say no. And that carries unanimously. Okay, our next item is a request to find the proposed small-scale future land use amendment consistent with the comprehensive plan and compatible with the character of the surrounding area, and recommend approval of the small-scale future land use amendment from county industrial and city industrial to city commercial, max 0.25 FAR, for the property owned by Mid-Florida Freezer Properties LLC and located south of West Orange Blossom Trail and west of Lake view Drive. We have a staff presentation.
Thank you. Good evening, Mr. Chairman. Bobby Howell, Planning Manager. Subject property is located southwest, south of West Orange Blossom Trail and west of Lakeview Drive, and is 4.88 acres in size. You can see it outlined in yellow on the screen. Subject properties were annexed into the city on December 31st, 1996, and October 21st, 2020 via ordinances number 1022 and 2794 respectively. The applicant is requesting a future land use amendment from county and city industrial to city commercial in order to construct a convenience store with gasoline sales on the property. Proposed commercial future land use is consistent with the surrounding area, as 441 is considered to be a commercial corridor. The Development Review Committee recommends approval, and the staff recommends approval. If you have any questions, we'd be happy to answer them, and I believe the applicant has a brief presentation as well.
Okay, very good. Any questions of staff? Okay, thank you. Does the petitioner have a presentation? And if you would give us your name and address for the record, please.
Good evening. My name is Tara Tedder. I'm from Lounge Drazdick, 215 North Yola Drive, Orlando, Florida. Just a brief presentation. The staff report was thorough, but just wanted to show you all the overview of the subject property, the current site conditions that are built out there today. Part of it is vacant, and the other part of it has an older retail facility on the site. So the intended upgrades to the site will have, I think, more compatibility with what's there currently. So there's already some commercial and retail uses, and you can see the surrounding zoning districts, some of which are in the county, some of which are in the city, are both industrial and commercial in nature. So our request, as stated by staff, is for a small-scale future land use amendment. I figured I'd do two presentations to deal with both the future land use amendment and the concurrent rezoning, as well as rezoning from transition and IL to CCOR. The justifications are based on the purposes of your CCOR district under your land development code, and it's compatible with the surrounding zoning designations. We'll be providing an enhanced commercial and retail services on a hard corner, and the site development will provide some needed access upgrades, and we're currently working with the city as well for some dedication of right-of-way for some needed improvements at that intersection. So our request is for a recommendation for approval, consistent with staff and DRC's findings on both the future land use map amendment as well as the rezoning. Happy to answer any questions you have. I won't come back up for another same presentation on the next item unless there's any questions or comments from the audience.
Okay. Questions of the petition?
Okay, I have a question. Will you rewind to the...
Sure.
How you want to reuse the property?
So we don't have any pictures of the current plans for the property, but there will be commercial uses on the site. But we have pictures of what the... Those show you the adjacent zoning districts, and then we have the current site condition photos.
Oh, yeah, I'm familiar. I pass that all the time.
Yeah.
Okay, I was just curious what you... How you reuse the property after, as the changes take place? You mentioned it in your language there.
Yep, so the site upgrades, the commercial site upgrades that we're planning for the property?
Yes.
Yep, so we are hopefully going to be able to get a commercial use, including probably a 7-Eleven gas station, a new enhanced gas station with gas pumps and a retail option there as well.
Thank you.
Okay, further questions?
Uh-huh. I come out Boy Scout side of it every day. I waited... I only waited two traffic light rotations coming out this evening. Have you done a traffic study? Are you working to get... Those are two-lane roads. Before I turned onto the highway, and I finally had to go out into the middle of the road so that when the oncoming traffic coming out of Lakeview finally stopped, then I could finally make the turn. And you're going to put commercial property along the west side of that street. They're not going to be able to get in or out when there's rush traffic. So I have grave concerns with the amount of traffic. I thought they were widening the road. It's a county road. We don't have control of it here at the city. But I was hoping, but no. Because the traffic standard used to get knocked over all the time by the A chain wheelers that would come down. They did widen the intersection so they could run over the end of the curb. But I hope I've painted a picture for you.
No, you absolutely... And it's a conversation we've actually had with staff, and I'm sure staff can speak to this as well. The only ability that we have to offer anything up with this development is on Lakeview Drive. So you can see Lakeview Drive runs adjacent to our site.
Oh, I know. I know. There's nothing that can be done on the trail. Yeah.
Right, but on Lakeview Drive at least, we're currently talking with the city about the width of the right-of-way dedication they would need. If the site remains as it is today and we don't redevelop it, then the project is going to have the same exact width on Lakeview Drive. There won't be able to be those access improvements on Lakeview for that intersection, short of there being a taking or some eminent domain initiated by the city to acquire private property for those public improvements. So one of the benefits would be we will at least be able to provide some of the needed right-of-way that the city wants to construct things like wider turn lanes into that intersection. And we do have to work with them to go through the site plan review process to ensure that we meet those conditions for upgraded access, because the site is deficient today under access standards. So at a minimum, we would have an enhanced, a safer access, and pedestrian connectivity along our property, which doesn't currently exist.
So it... And all the traffic that's going to be coming from the south side, the southwest side, with all the increased warehousing and industrial facilities that are going in, it's just non-stop traffic.
So one of the issue... And I represent a lot of national retailers for commercial gas stations. And one of the things that we always deal with at every location we go in, and that is proven by the traffic manuals on a national basis, is that gas station convenience stores have something called capture traffic. So the benefit is nobody goes to a gas station as a destination. You don't, you know, get up and say, you know, "I think I'm going to drive 20 miles out of the way because I really like that 7-Eleven." People go on the way to and from work, and really that's why you find gas stations on opposite sides of corners, is because we capture traffic that is heading already in a predetermined destination. So from a commercial standpoint, traffic is actually minimized when you have capture traffic, and it's up to 70% of traffic is captured by a use of a convenience store and gas station, and that's what we've proposed. We've submitted that site plan to your staff, but again, we still have to work out... It's only conceptual right now. We still have to work out those access improvements at that intersection, and I think it's going to take some time, right? It's going to take the property across the street, redeveloping to have to dedicate some right-of-way as well to the city so that that intersection can be approved.
Gas station right across the street.
An older one, yeah.
And then about a half-mile east, you have the 7-Eleven at Errol Parkway. So there's... Anyway, we'll see how it all shakes out.
And from a marketability perspective, you know, all of our clients do that type of market analysis to determine whether there is in fact a need and a demand, especially when some of those outdated gas stations are there. They have terrible access, and it's typically unsafe access. It's not built to the widths that you would want today. They don't have separation from driveways and access points that would be required today. So if anything, I think we'll probably have the safer of the gas stations along that corridor, because it'll be built brand-new, and it'll be built to code and all of the current standards. And so I'm sure if there's anything else staff wants to add, but we've had that discussion. They've brought up the traffic concerns and the issues that they're facing, and I hope we can...
Everybody's aware of those traffic problems there, so...
Hopefully, our project can minimize some of them, is I think what the staff has indicated, that the right-of-way dedication would help work toward minimizing some of those existing problems.
We'll see how it all works out.
Hopefully, yeah. Thank you very much for your time. I'm happy to answer any other questions.
Thank you very much.
Okay. Any further questions of the applicant? Okay, thank you very much.
Thank you.
Okay, we'll close the presentations and open the public hearing. I do have an intent to speak card on this item from Benjamin Thompson. And just give us your full name and address for the record, if you would, please.
My name is Benjamin Thompson. My wife and I, we're the owner of 449 Lakeview Drive, which is right at that corner right there that we're referencing, so we're familiar with the traffic. I'm here to speak against the potential of the future land use of this area. As we just heard, I was also informed that the plan for this land west to construct not just a 7-Eleven, but 7-Elevens for a gas station with diesel tanks as for specifically for the... My apologies. The larger commercial trucks. I have multiple concerns, but due to the time, I'll keep it brief. My first concern would definitely be the health aspect of this. There are multiple health concerns that come with having a gas station in the immediate area of our home. The first being benzene. Benzene is a colorless, flammable liquid that is present at and around gas stations. According to the CDC, it works by causing cells to not work correctly. For example, it can cause bone marrow not to produce enough red blood cells, which can lead to anemia. The Department of Health and Human Services has also determined that benzene causes cancer in humans. The last effect of benzene that I do want to bring up because of its personal importance to me is the fact that there are studies that link exposure to benzene to pregnancy concerns and birth defects. Birth defects such as low birth weight, increased instances of children born with spina bifida, and increased childhood leukemia. According to the study by Columbia University, benzene is found within 525 feet from gas stations, and this is reflected in multiple other studies as well. Another area from health is ground-level ozone pollution. It's caused by a mixture of chemicals and gas that you find around gas stations, come from vehicle exhaust, et cetera, service stations, that type of thing. According to the EPA National Institute of Health, ground-level ozone reduces lung function and harms lung tissue, causing things like respiratory problems such as bronchitis and asthma. My next thing I want to bring up is environmental concerns. We are directly, as you can see, right above a lake. We are at the top of a small hill from the lake. So we were definitely... It's right there. Adding a gas station to the area would put the lake and the wildlife in that lake. It's a natural spring-fed lake, so putting the aqua for everything there, definitely a concern, and then putting that in danger. Research has shown that gas station containment levels, contaminant levels, are 30 times higher than an average residence, which is definitely much higher. And a Johns Hopkins University study found that on average, 40 gallons of gasoline is spilled every year in the average gas station, which would then pour into the ground and into Lake Anne right there. This doesn't even cover the risk of underground damage to the tanks, et cetera. We've spoke briefly on... Well, we spoke on traffic. I'll leave that there. But the last thing I do want to bring up, since we are talking specifically with the commercial trucks, an average diesel engine truck has, gets up to 100 decibels of volume, which is, if that was in the work area, would require hearing protection and can cause permanent ear damage, which is a concern. When we purchased my home, myself, my wife, we did so with the intent to start a family and invest in our home, our community, and with the plan to construct a gas station, this gas station specifically in this area, it would be very difficult, if not impossible, to achieve these dreams. So thank you guys for your time. I really appreciate it.
Okay, thank you. Anyone else wish to appear before the commission on this item? And if so, if you would come up and give us your name and address for the record.
Good evening. I filled out the petition. I thought I'd be on there. My name is Isaac Perez. My wife and kids, we live at 441 Lakeview.
Okay, I had you for item four, but that's okay.
I do apologize. I can come back up?
No, no, now it's fine.
So a number of things that he touched on. Environmental crime, which I don't think he touched on. Florida actually has a statute that they've actually enacted because of the issues that gas stations bring as far as crime. I have it listed here. I can provide it for you. It's actually, it was enacted in 2006 due to the issues. I have three kids. They're going to start a family. We have people that are expecting. So that gas station is going to bring a number of unwanted desirables. It's designed for tankers and semis due to the issues that we have around there. I understand they want to put it there because of a... They need the access, but we have, I think you mentioned it, seven gas stations in a two-mile radius. So between the seven gas stations and the two-mile radius, I don't know if it's necessary to have an additional one. The additional amount of homes that are being put in pack by Lake Apopka and Binion, the influx of traffic is going to be overwhelming. I mean, not only that, they're going to have to worry about watershed. That is a large surface area of concrete. Where is that excess water going to go? Into the lake that we live in and live on? There's no retention. That water's already high and is already being addressed with St. John's Water Management due to the watershed off the Coca-Cola factory. Some of you seem like you know that area pretty well. What I don't want to see is a community that was built in 1950 turn into an industrial slush. Her grandparents built the house next door. Her dad still lives there. Her grandmother lives a house stamp. There's a number of kids that live in there, and we just don't... I could understand if it was a necessity or something that would benefit the community. The revenue from that gas station will be dispersed between the seven that are around there, which are accessible. The racetrack is brand-new on Herbert Smith and was designed to influx the overflow of all the storage facilities being built back there. So it's a little... It's both community-based and both a little personal-based. And I understand, you know, that there may be a revenue, but it's going to be distributed. There's a lot of things, so I just felt like we should probably come up here and speak just because we don't want to see the decline in the lake. The lake's huge. We have otters. We have kingfishers. We have animals and birds that are... I mean, we have crawfish in that lake. That's abnormal for lakes in Florida. I could bring you freshwater jelly... Or shrimp, freshwater shrimp out of that lake. I mean, her grandparents literally had that house built. So I just... My kids make fourth generation there. So it's tough. Not only that, but it's a five-acre spring-fed lake. The crime... If you look at statistics on crime that gas station brings, 6% armed robberies nationwide come from gas stations. It's just due to the nature of what they are, where they are. And there's other topics that I can't factually speak on, so I'm not... I know I've got a little bit of time left. Just want to say thank you, and I appreciate it. Have a good night, all right? Thank you, guys.
Okay, thank you. I think I saw the applicant wanting to get up.
Tara Tedder, again, for the record. I can appreciate the concerns that have been enumerated by the local residents. I mean, honestly, they're the concerns that I hear every time I go for any sort of convenience store gas station use. And so when it comes to things like the benzines that you've heard about, the environmental studies are actually not conclusive on that end, and so some of those studies are outdated. And those studies really do speak to older gas stations as well. The newer gas stations are built to the highest environmental standards. We have to comply with local, state, and federal regulations on gas stations. For a concern about there being underground leaking, it is basically impossible. You would probably have to drop a bomb on a 7-Eleven in order for there to be a leak because the underground tanks are double-lined, and they have 24-hour surveillance on those tanks. So if there were to be a leak from the interior tank, it pours into another underground-walled tank as well that would then not leak, short of, again, there being some catastrophic natural disaster or something that would probably take down more than just those tanks. And so those types of 24-hour monitored environmental controls make this use incredibly safe compared to what gas stations used to be, which was not as safe, which is why the rules have been changed and the technologies have improved for gas stations over the years. In addition, there's 24-hour third-party monitoring for all security of every single gas station. So the great thing about things like 7-Eleven is that if there is a robbery or somebody tries to rob a 7-Eleven, they alert every single gas station within miles of that store so that they would know that there is a possibility of an armed robber who might be coming to get multiple locations at once. So that third-party independent monitoring allows for both interior and exterior surveillance on all of our properties. All of our... The employees who work there also have panic alarm systems that they can utilize. We have policies where you don't keep more than a small amount of cash overnight so that there is a disincentive to try to arm a 7-Eleven. Perhaps you could steal some candy bars and Slurpees, but you're not going to get a large amount of cash because it's just not kept overnight there. So everything that we have to develop has been reviewed by your staff. So when you read over your staff report, part of the consideration that you have as a planning commission and that we will ask the city council to consider is there's a standard of competent and substantial evidence. Your professional staff has given you the opinion that our request is compatible and consistent with both your comprehensive plan as well as your land development code. And your staff's professional opinion is really what should rue the day in these types of instances, because they're the ones that are analyzing the Wakiva Protection Act and have found that it's compatible. They're the ones that would analyze a site plan to determine that we will not have runoff and discharge into any water bodies, that we have to comply, again, with local, state, and federal environmental regulations on the type of use that we would propose. And in addition, I would argue, and I heard somebody say, "We don't want there to be a slush of industrial uses," but that's exactly what you're going to have today on this property, is just going to be an extension of more industrial uses coming closer to these folks' houses. So, you know, there's things like a commercial gas station that you can have there, or perhaps an asphalt-crushing facility or some other industrial use that's going to be bringing in very large trucks all day long, whereas we do not have that many trucks that come in for refilling. We have smaller trucks that provide any of the types of fresh food replacements for our stores. Our diesel engines stay on-site an average of three minutes when they come to do underground refueling. So I would argue that more compatible than just extending out heavy industrial closer to residential is on a hard corner where you are going to be able to have upgraded access, the right-of-way dedication to the city so that you can extend out those turn lanes to be able to improve what is objectively a problem at this intersection, and to be able to have a use that is more consistent and compatible than what you have there today. We also annexed part of these properties in, so we have to give them a future land We also annexed part of these properties in, so we have to give them a future land use designation and a rezoning. And when we evaluated this with your staff, they came up again with their professional conclusion that this was, in fact, compatible and consistent with the policies your city has set forth. And we are asking for commercial, and if you read your comprehensive plan, it specifically says neighborhood-oriented commercial uses, and that is what gas station and convenience stores are under the code, under the comprehensive plan. So, I would ask you to defer to the recommendation that your professional staff has given through the evaluation process over the last couple of months of working with us. Certainly happy to answer any other questions that you may have.
Okay, and we're still in the public hearing phase, so I would ask, these are the only intent-to-speak cards that I have, but I would ask if anyone else in the audience wished to appear before the commission on this item. And seeing none, and do we have any further questions of the applicant? Okay, thank you very much.
Thank you very much.
Then we'll close the public hearing, bring you back to the commission. What's your pleasure?
I have a couple of comments. The homeowners that made the statement about benzene, and I agree with Mrs. Tedrow that that is unproven science, there's speculation at this point. I'm in the water industry and understand that. A couple of things, and I don't know, it may be there's a misconception, the spilling of fuel on the ground is completely irrelevant when it comes to groundwater, any kind of penetration, because of the underlayment that they put at gas stations. The fuel hits the ground and evaporates, so the one or two gallons that spilled today is really irrelevant. The traffic, as the commissioner spoke with, is more of an offshoot, I think, of the development further behind this area. And the other question, it just makes a question to me, is that, you know, this development here, there's a gas station on the corner that isn't up to the standards of the gas station would be here, as far as the underground tanks, as far as the water retention. As far as I know, that gas station doesn't have any water retention. I may be incorrect, but I went and looked at the site today. So, it kind of just, in my mind, it's like, okay, well, we don't want another gas station here, okay, well, that's fine on that, but saying that the gas station is, it makes it difficult to raise your children, you're worried about the lake contamination, well, you know, when you moved there, there was a gas station there on that corner that has the same, arguably, more dangerous as far as contamination towards that lake than the one is. So, that's just, I don't see that as a compelling argument.
And some of the issues in terms of traffic and access, that would be dealt with in later phases of this process. That's not really before us at the moment. Okay, further discussion. Do I have a motion? This is the land use, item three.
I'll move a movement to find a proposed future land use amendment consistent with the comprehensive plan, compatible with the character of the surrounding area, recommend approval to change the future land use designation from county industrial to city industrial, city commercial, subject to the findings of the staff report.
Okay, a motion by Commissioner Gussler, is there a second? Second by Commissioner Washington, we have a motion and a second. Is there any discussion? Hearing none, we'll vote. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. All opposed, say no. And that carries unanimously. Okay, our next item for this same property is a request to find a proposed change of zoning consistent with the comprehensive plan and land development code, and to recommend approval of the proposed change of zoning from T. Transitional District and IL. Light Industrial District to C. Cor. Corridor Commercial District for the property owned by Mid-Florida Freezer Properties LLC and located south of West Orange Blossom Trail and west of Lakeview Drive. And we have a staff presentation.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Once again, Bobby Howell, Planning Manager. This is the companion rezoning ordinance to the comprehensive plan amendment that you just recommended approval of. It's changing the zoning from transitional and IL. Light Industrial to corridor commercial to be consistent with the commercial future land use designation. Development Review Committee recommends approval, and staff recommends approval. If you have any questions, we'd be happy to answer them. The applicant is here as well.
Okay, any questions of staff? Okay, thank you. And the petitioner, I think, said you didn't want to make another presentation. So, we will close the presentations and open the public hearing. Anyone wish to appear before the commission on this item? And seeing none, we'll close the public hearing, bring it back to the commission. What's your pleasure?
Mr. Chairman, just for the record, if we can incorporate the comments made by the applicant in the other item into this one, so that the record is clear that those statements are incorporated.
Yes, she did state it.
But I want to make sure that they're incorporated into this agenda item, because just to, I'm clearing the record, just in case.
Okay.
Are you ready?
I'm ready.
I move that we find the proposed change of zoning consistent with the comprehensive plan and land development code, and recommend approval of the proposed change of zoning from T. Transitional District to IL. Light Industrial District to C. Cor. Corridor Commercial District for the property owned by Mid-Florida Freezer Properties LLC and located south of West Orange Blossom Trail and west of Lakeview Drive.
Okay, we have a motion by Commissioner Lorrindo, is there a second?
Second.
Second by Commissioner Gussler, we have a motion and a second. Any discussion? Then we'll vote. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, say no. And that carries unanimously. Okay, our next item is a request to find the proposed large-scale future land use amendment consistent with the comprehensive plan and compatible with the character of the surrounding area, and recommend approval of the large-scale future land use amendment from mixed-use, max 1.0 FAR, max 15 dwelling units per acre, to industrial, max 0.6 FAR, for the property owned by Chori Holdings I LLC and located south of West Orange Blossom Trail and west of Hermit Smith Road. We have a staff presentation.
The applicant is proposing a large-scale future land use amendment from mixed-use to industrial for approximately 11.94 acres. The subject properties are highlighted in yellow and located north of Hogstad Road and west of Hermit Smith Road. To the north is a railroad and the Orange Blossom Trail. To the east and south are residential properties, and to the west is a vacant property as well as warehousing. The properties are zoned mixed-use Eastshore Gateway, and an application for IL. Light Industrial zoning has been submitted and will be presented at the next agenda item. Subject area is approximately 11.94 acres, with industrially-zoned or industrially-oriented properties being in the vicinity. The Development Review Committee recommends approval of the large-scale future land use amendment from mixed-use to industrial, and the recommended motion for this evening is to find the proposed amendment consistent with the comprehensive plan and compatible with the character of the surrounding area, and recommend transmittal of the future land use map designation from mixed-use to industrial to the Florida Department of Economic Opportunity. This concludes my presentation. I'd be happy to address any questions that you may have, and I do believe the applicant has a presentation as well.
Okay. Any questions of staff? Okay, thank you. And does the applicant have a presentation? And again, if you'd give us your name and address for the record for this item.
Good evening. Tara Tedrow, Lounge Draznick, 215 North Eola Drive, Orlando, Florida. Just another quick presentation, showing you the location of the two properties that are proposed for the rezoning and large-scale future land use map amendment tonight. This gives you the overview of where our properties lie. It shows you some of that existing industrial properties, and there's some commercial as well adjacent. This shows the current site conditions on the entrance to the building, as well as the current buildings on site. My client has plans to put about $600,000 worth of upgrades into the property to refurbish the buildings and be able to upgrade it for some light industrial uses. This shows you the adjacent zoning districts, so we are in a pretty heavy light industrial area, so this is certainly compatible with those zoning districts as they exist today. So, our request is for a large-scale future land use map amendment from mixed-use to industrial, as well as a rezoning to light industrial. And your light industrial district purpose is to provide lands that accommodate light industrial and support development, so there's a range of those types of light industrial uses that are allowed. As been determined by your staff, it's compatible with the surrounding zoning designations, will provide an appropriate transition from commercial to adjacent industrial, and the site upgrades will be provided as part of our redevelopment. So, our request is for a recommendation for approval consistent with staff and DRC's findings on both the future land use map amendment and rezoning, and similar to last time, I'll do both of the presentations at once, so I don't have to come back up again and take up more of your time, but happy to answer any questions that you may have.
Okay, any questions of the applicant? Okay, thank you very much.
Thank you very much.
We'll close the presentations and open the public hearing. Anyone wish to appear before the commission on this item? And seeing none, we'll close the public hearing and bring it back to the commission. What's your pleasure?
Mr. Chairman, I make a motion to find a proposed large-scale future land use amendment consistent with the comprehensive plan and compatible with the character of the surrounding area, and recommend approval of the large-scale future land use amendment from mixed-use, max 1.0 FAR, max 115 DEU/AC to industrial, max 0.6 FAR, for the property owned by Chori, is that right, Chori, Chori Holdings I LLC and located south of West Orange Blossom Trail and west of Hermit Smith Road.
Okay, we have a motion by Commissioner Washington, is there a second?
Second.
Second by Commissioner Gussler, we have a motion and a second. Any discussion? Hearing none, we'll vote. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, say no. And that carries unanimously. Okay, our next item for this same property is a request to find the proposed change of zoning consistent with the comprehensive plan and land development code, and to recommend approval of the proposed change of zoning from MUESGT, Mixed Use Eastshore Gateway District, to IL. Light Industrial District for the property owned by Chori Holdings I LLC and located south of Orange Blossom Trail and west of Hermit Smith Road. And we have a staff presentation.
This is a proposed rezoning from mixed-use Eastshore Gateway to IL. Light Industrial District for the same subject properties as the previous agenda item. The proposed IL. Light Industrial zoning is compatible with the previously proposed industrial future land use. The Development Review Committee recommends approval of the proposed rezoning from mixed-use Eastshore Gateway District to IL. Light Industrial District, and the recommended motion for this evening is to find the proposed change of zoning consistent with the comprehensive plan and compatible with the character of the surrounding areas, recommending approval of the proposed change of zoning from MUESGT, Mixed Use Eastshore Gateway District, to IL. Light Industrial District, for the property owned by Chori Holdings I LLC, located south of West Orange Blossom Trail and west of Hermit Smith Road. This concludes my presentation, and the applicant and I would be happy to address any questions that you may have.
Okay, any questions of staff? Okay, and we will include your comments in this, for the record, in this item as well. Okay, we'll close the presentations and open the public hearing. Anyone wish to appear before the commission on this item? And seeing none, we'll close the public hearing, bring it back to the commission. What's your pleasure?
I'll make a motion. Recommend approval to propose change of zoning consistent with the comprehensive plan and land use development code, and to recommend approval of the proposed change of zoning from mixed-use Eastshore Gateway to light industrial for the property owned by Chori Holdings I LLC located West Orange Blossom Trail, west of Herman Smith Road.
Okay, we have a motion by Commissioner Gussler, is there a second?
Second.
Second by Commissioner Lorrindo, we have a motion and a second. Any discussion? Then we'll vote. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, say no. And that carries unanimously. Okay, our next item is a request to find the proposed change of zoning consistent with the comprehensive plan and land development code, and to recommend approval of the proposed change of zoning from T. Transition District to RCE. Residential Country Estate for the property owned by John and Grace Johnson and located at 1701 Hermit Smith Road. And we have a staff presentation.
Thank you. Bobby Howell, Planning Manager. Property is located at 1701 Hermit Smith Road and is 2.52 acres in size and is zoned transitional. The applicant's requesting a rezon of the property to RCE in order to do a lot split on the property. They want to split it into two parcels, about one acre in size. The current zoning of transitional requires a minimum of two and a half acres, so under that zoning, they can't split it. The DRC has reviewed this, and the staff has reviewed it as well, and we recommend approval. If you have any questions, we'd be happy to answer them. The applicant is here as well.
Okay, any questions of staff? Okay, thank you, Bobby. Does the applicant wish to make a presentation? And seeing none, we'll close the presentations, open the public hearing. Anyone wish to appear before the commission on this item? And seeing none, we'll close the public hearing, bring it back to the commission. What's your pleasure?
I'll make a motion. Make a motion to find a proposed change of zoning consistent with the comprehensive plan and the land development code, and to recommend approval of the proposed change of zoning from transitional district to residential country estate for the property owned by John and Grace Johnson and located at 1701 Herman Smith Road.
Okay, we have a motion by Commissioner Gussler, is there a second?
Second.
Second by Commissioner Washington, we have a motion and a second. Any discussion? Then we'll vote. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, say no. And that carries unanimously. Okay. Our next item is a quasi-judicial item, and it's a request to approve a special exception for Little Brownie Properties to allow heavy equipment, retail, repair, servicing, and storage in the light industrial IL. Zoning District at 1350 Sheeler Avenue. Since this is quasi-judicial, I would ask if anyone desires to be recognized as an affected party.
No. I'm Little Brownie Properties.
Okay. And I would ask commission members if anyone has had ex parte communications on this item. Okay, then we'll proceed with the staff presentation.
Thank you. For the record, Bobby Howell, Planning Manager. The owner of the property is requesting approval of a special exception to allow heavy equipment, retail, repair, servicing, and storage at 1350 Sheeler Avenue. The property is owned light industrial and is the site of an existing industrial development known as Little Brownie Properties. The applicant is requesting a special exception to allow for a potential tenant's business to operate in a new building addition at the subject property for the sales, rental, and service of street sweepers, trailers, and equipment. In accordance with Section 2.51G4 of the 2019 Land Development Code, the special exception request is required to be in compliance with all 13 standards noted in the code. Staff has determined that it is. The proposed use is appropriate for its location, is compatible with the general character of the surrounding lands, and use is permitted in the IL. Zoning District. There are 12 conditions of approval that the site will be required to be developed in accordance with, and those are contained within your staff report. The Planning Commission has the authority to take final action on the special exception application, may approve the application, approve the application with conditions, or deny the application. The DRC recommends approval, and staff recommends approval. If you have any questions, staff and the applicant are available.
Okay, any questions of staff?
So, in effect, they're just building an additional building to accommodate this new business?
No, sir. It's actually going to be in the building that's outlined in the black circle. It's an existing building on site. There's just gonna be a tenant. A tenant on site.
Okay, further questions? Okay, thank you. Does the petitioner have a presentation? Okay. Then we'll close the presentations, we'll open the public hearing. Anyone wish to appear before the commission on this item? Okay, seeing none, we'll close the public hearing, bring it back to the commission. What's your pleasure?
Mr. Chairman, I make a motion to approve the special exception for Little Brownie Properties to allow heavy equipment, retail, repair, servicing, and storage in the light industrial IL. Zoning District at 1350 Sheeler Road Avenue, sorry, Avenue.
And is that subject to the special exception conditions of approval and findings in the staff report?
Yes.
Okay. We have a motion by Commissioner Washington, is there a second?
Second.
Second by Commissioner Lorrindo, we have a motion and a second. Any discussion? Then we'll vote. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, say no. And that carries unanimously. Do we have any old business? Do we have any new business?
Just one point of new business, I'd like to introduce our new planner, Planner One, Allison Williams. It's her first day with the city today, so you'll be seeing some of her before your board doing presentations.
Very good. Thank you.
I just have a mention. Tomorrow is Veterans Day. Mr. Chairman is a veteran, and I'm sure there are other people in this room who are also veterans. Thank you for your service.
Thank you. Okay, any further new business? There being no further business to come before the commission, we'll be adjourned. There being no further business to come before the commission, we'll be adjourned.